All right, welcome to the October 15 regular meeting of the North Augusta Planning Commission. All right, if we could please have roll call.
Erin Slade.
Red Harbison.
Uh, bigger.
Jesse Elliott.
Lisa Christine.
And I'm your chairwoman, Christine Crawford. One more.
Chelsea Waddell.
Chelsea Waddell.
We'll let Ms. Waddell say her.
Sorry, Chelsea Waddell.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we have completed roll call. If commissioners could please review the minutes if there are, and if there are any changes, please share them. If not, entertain a motion of approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So we moved a second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Paradise, are there any changes to the agenda?
Uh, no ma'am.
All right, so thank you, Mr. James Sutton is going to come forth as a Director of Public Service and help us understand our city's utility systems and capacities a little better.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for allowing me the time to come to give you all a presentation and an overview of the City of North Augusta's wastewater collection system. I'll go through it and I will state that a lot of decisions that this commission makes adds to our utility, expands it, adds to our asset inventories and we appreciate all y'all do to oversight. Uh, the city's wastewater collection system, it's in a service area of about 23 and a half miles. Uh, we call it square miles, it's really not a square, but it borders off of other utility agencies that border us. Uh, we have Edgefield County, Breezy Hill, and Valley Public Service Authority and across the river, the City of Augusta. In that service area, uh, we maintain the pipelines, lift stations, and pump stations and various other components of the collection system. Uh, we have a total of 11,858 customer service connections. And then the illustration to your right, uh, picture, you'll see a connection where it's gray and it turns into the purple color. That's what we consider surface connection. The homeowner is responsible for that gray line from where interconnection to the city's main back to their home. And, uh, we also have residential, commercial, industrial, and one big large utility, which is Edgefield County, that conveys a considerable amount of wastewater into our system on a daily basis. It averages about one and a half to two million gallons per day. Uh, we maintain an asset inventory for maintenance purposes, audit purposes to the state. And, uh, we have 239 miles of pipeline, which quenched a little over a million feet of pipe. Twenty-seven manholes that interconnect into the pipeline so that we can perform inspections, internal inspections and cleaning of the pipeline. And also 22 lift stations are inspected every day of the week. Uh, the large ones, the small ones, they're more or less inspected to a three times a week. But they also are, their purpose is to pump the wastewater up the hill. Uh, the collection system, uh, we have, North Augusta's not on a flat terrain. They, uh, we, we don't have as many pumps as a flat terrain may would have, but we do have a hilly terrain. So at the location of a lot of our lower lying areas in the city, we have these lift stations that's in the center of your image. And a lot of the neighborhoods, subdivisions, commercial areas, not all, I think it's about 40% of our customers discharge into one of our lift stations that are located throughout the city. When the homeowner flushes their water closet, the water, all the fixtures that goes and conveys in through their lateral line into the tap, into the main. Then some of it goes gravity all the way to the wastewater treatment facility, but some goes to the pump stations that lifts it and pumps it to a higher elevation that goes into a gravity line. So ultimately, when the flow collects together throughout our collection system downstream from the homes and the mains and the lift stations, it all goes gravity to the county public service authority's wastewater treatment facility. Operations and maintenance, uh, our collection system operates 24 hours a day, Saturdays a week. Uh, we have mixed marked a time for our asset inventory and our collection system. We use 1950 as our starting point on the age of our system. Uh, we do 24 hours a day emergency service around the clock. Typically, the wastewater doesn't stop flowing like your power might get cut off, may lose cable. Sewer doesn't stop. When it stops, it usually overflows onto the streets whenever there's a power problem or catastrophic event. Uh, we maintain pipelines on a daily basis, cleaning, doing internal inspections. Uh, manholes are access points that we enter to clean the lines and inspect and inspect them. We report them back. Uh, the lift stations, like indicated, they're inspected weekly, daily, and constantly. Let me point out one thing, go back to time. Um, one of the, that picture up to the right hand corner, uh, the far right picture kind of illustrates that we had a severe storm and the tree fell over and took out one of our interceptor lines that runs down by the river. Uh, we had to go in, plug the line, clean up the discharge, it went onto the ground, into the creeks. And that picture to your left of that is the line afterward installed. It took about two weeks to rebuild that line. It was in, back behind the Rapid Sun Division a few years ago. All right, uh, we have several ongoing infrastructure improvement projects right now. Uh, we have about eight million, $800,000 of the funding that we're spending across the infrastructure. Uh, one of our main qualities listed up on the left is Caroline Springs Lift Station. It was placed in the service, it's been upgraded for the years in the 50s and 70s. Now we're just going to totally replace it. Our project is scheduled to be constructed by April 2026. Uh, the next project down is the Crestman and Lynn Hur Subdivisions. That project involves rehabilitating and relining 23,000 feet of clay line that was installed in the 60s and the 50s. Uh, and the manholes as well will be relined. It'll structurally renew that infrastructure. The industrial park is pending. We are going through an approval process to have industrial park relined, rehabilitated. That's about 8,000 feet of pipe. And we're going to hopefully have that project underway here by November. The Riverfront Interior Interceptors, now that's one of the biggest projects we had. It was about 28,000 feet of wastewater interceptor that collects all of the city's waste and discharges to the wastewater treatment plant. It runs from the Rapid Sun Division, Long River, down by Riverside Boulevard, up Winnebago, and it cuts through and goes all the way over to Wombraut Corporation's facilities along Clay Street, Claypit Road. So these, the pictures up on the top to the right, it shows the clay line, the condition of it. Ice cracked and broken and fractured up. And the picture to the left of that is actual pipe that's been rehabilitated structurally. So that's what it looks like when they're finished with it. And the manholes down at the bottom are saying they made a brick. They're relying, those will renew the system. Those pipes are some of the most costly and most environmental problematic lines they are. So we're pleased to get those renewed and be able to improve our system. Okay, here's the good stuff. Uh, we have to make sure on a daily basis that right at 4.8 million gallons of wastewater remains in the pipe system and doesn't overflow into the streets, the creeks, backyards of homes, and discharge out into public spaces. So, uh, that wastewater is collected by all our customers and conveyed to the Aitken County Public Service Authority. Uh, years ago, prior to, after, I think around 1983, uh, Aitken County Public Service Authority built a wastewater treatment facility off Atomic Road. And the city of North Augusta went in and purchased 8.6 million gallons of capacity from Aitken County Public Service Authority per day. And since that purchased, we've already allocated 7.9 million gallons a day. That's already been allocated to our current customers and approved development. So we've already been permitted for those. And right now, anybody coming in, we have a remaining capacity of 713,000 gallons, which is not bad, but compared to 8 million, it's not good. But we have got a lot of development that's happened in the city over the years as well. I know that was rather quick and sometimes I'm a little too straightforward to the point. But, uh, I'd like to hear some questions you may have. Try my best to give you the answers.
Well, starting from the end, since that's what's freshest on my mind, these gallons is lots. And I don't understand, those numbers don't mean a whole lot to me as far as what's, so the 713,000 gallons left, roughly how many homes does that cover?
Uh, 11,000 in, in Edgefield County. Yeah. That's all inclusive with that and everything that's pending, that's been approved. It may not have been developed, but it's been approved. But I will state on that prior slide where I indicated it was 4.8 million gallons a day going through our system. Uh, and we only have 713 left, but we purchased 8.6. What that indicates is we have a lot of development that hadn't been developed yet. So it's coming, but in the same, there's also some reserve in there for additional I and I flow and such, so.
So I guess as a follow-up, so then what do we do when we have used the 713? Does that, if a market increase, is there additional capacity for us to purchase? What does that mean?
Actually, we are in the process of working with Aitken County Public Service Authority, all the utility agencies are. Uh, at this time, uh, when that 713,000 gallons as it stands right now, in all probability, we won't be doing no more construction. Uh, if we had a big agency come in right now and wanted to put something fairly large at our industrial park, we may not be able to serve them because they may require a lot of capacity.
So Tommy, I assume you guys work with this information before it even comes to us? Or is this something we need to consider after the fact?
We, we look at this when we develop our recommendations for, um, for the planning commission. This is, um, Mr. Sutton and I work real close together. He keeps me up, um, you know, up to speed on what's going on there. And it is a issue that I'm trying to follow.
Besides not growing anymore, do you, do you have any, what are the other steps?
I'm sorry?
I said besides not growing anymore, like just stopping, which is probably not really going to happen. What would the steps be to try to continue the ability for growth?
Without capacity?
Well, how would you grow the capacity, I guess?
Well, in order to get, gain more capacity, they're going to have to do an expansion of Aitken County Public Service Authority so they can get permitted to accept more waste from other agencies. And they are in the process of, uh, getting that done. But there's not a near term project completion date being given. I don't think as of yet, and I've been involved in at least a couple of meetings they've had so far. I don't have a whole lot of detail on their project schedule, but we'll hopefully know in the near future. If I had to guess, three or four years.
Let me ask, and then what, so of that 713 though, that includes any growth that also occurs in Edgefield County, correct?
No ma'am.
Oh, it does not?
No ma'am, Edgefield County is a customer of the guests. They purchase capacity from us. Now, now, I can't speak for Edgefield, but there's a lot of agencies around here who do need capacity and they don't, they just can't get it.
Okay.
James, one of the things that might be helpful is to set how many gallons per day for a dwelling unit?
Right. Uh, actually, the South Carolina Department of Environmental Services, it was set at 300 gallons per day. And so that some of these agencies who didn't have any capacity so that they could help them at least get a few houses built, they went in and changed that capacity limit from 300 to 275 gallons per day, which ain't enough, ain't a whole lot when you start putting several hundred or a few thousand properties together, it adds up.
Just how do they, is there some formula or are they looking, I guess, actual gallons to, to determine if that's accurate, right? Cause I get, I guess, how do they measure actual consumption? Cause I would think with newer, um, residences and some of the new low flow toilets, those kinds of things, capacity I would hope would be decreasing or the need for wastewater consumption would be decreasing.
Like metering?
Yeah.
Well.
Just wondering how they measure the kind of.
Right, they have a master meter that they measure off. We have two. Uh, several years ago, when, back in the later 80s, when Edgefield County and North Augusta come together and built what they call a pole branch interceptor that run from Austin Grayville Road over to Martin Town Road. Some of y'all who may have been around for a while may have remembered a very foul oder going down interstate towards Highway 25 up around Austin Grayville Road. But it was coming from Edgefield County, which Edgefield County conveys wastewater from Saluda County. So that also comes through the system. Saluda County is Edgefield County's customer, Edgefield is our customer. So that's where a lot of the flow comes in from the manufacturing upstream from us. But the city of North Augusta sold the capacity to them, which was a good thing at the time. It's not a bad thing now. Uh, with, with that being said, uh, the capacities, going back to your question, all the wastewater flow that North Augusta has is going through now what we call NIM's Branch. We did away with pole branch and it stopped the oder problem that was very problematic for our citizens. And when that was constructed, we put a meter stationed there, it's off of Highway 421. Uh, that belongs to Aitken County Public Service Authority. Then there's also a meter below the River North Sun Division. And that's where all of North Augusta's residential, commercial, and business customers go in there. So, and industrial, that's, they read that meter monthly and they bill off that. But yeah, one more little caveat. I've always been a little confused and I've raised a concern, but you know, going back to the number, we got 8.6 million, but we got 4.8 going through the system. And I realize there's some reserve there, but we always going to kind of be in the, out of pocket, if you will, missing that additional flow. That permitting stuff is what locks us into it.
There's a lot of growth going on in Edgefield County, and I'm assuming a lot of that is going to tie into our system as well? Or it kind of just depends on its development?
Yeah, I, I don't know exactly what Edgefield's doing. I, I deal with the manager a lot. He, I don't know, uh.
Like is there a, a capacity that they can dump into our system where we say no more? Or it's just a free for all at this point?
No, we don't allow for free for all. I, I know what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying, like is there like a, okay, you've done it, we've, we've given you enough and.
That they're, they're max capacity right now.
If, if, go ahead.
Go ahead, Tommy.
No, you go ahead.
I was going to say that, that, they, we're just, we're not in a position at the present time to, everything falls back to Aitken County.
When it comes to Edgefield County, cause I talk to the manager up there too, is they, Edgefield County has a certain portion that comes to us. And they've got a certain portion that goes to a treatment facility in the town of Edgefield. So they can put capacity there, but capacity on our system they don't have. And Saluda County is building a wastewater treatment plant, but they're not giving up what they purchased from Edgefield. I'm sorry.
I don't know, you told, that's a good way of putting it, yeah.
Now, especially I think, um, on both residential and commercial, or particular industrial, are there changes that we need to look at considering in terms of, and I don't know that it's necessarily us, but code and requirements for equipment to help alleviate that? Is there an efficiency, is there anything to do?
Yeah, you know, we're governed by the state agencies. So they, they got those numbers factored in.
Okay.
So if you're going to go in and just build one home, residential home, they're going to charge you 275 per day gallons. And then they're going to go get a permit and it gets charged against us. So we have to notify Aitken County and they go ahead and put it on the books. So we deduct it when it goes on there. But like a development, uh, I think that we'd look, uh, new development comes in. We, y'all are okay with it, city's okay with it, and we got the capacity then. It's approved and we just put it on the books.
Any other questions?
I just thought you'd say thank you for what you do. I know it's not like a popular field to be in dealing with waste. Uh, I think it's fascinating. I'd love to learn more. I might have to sit down with you one day. I think it's super cool. It's such a basic need that people forget about. Uh, so thank you for what you guys do.
Good work.
I highly appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
I have one more question.
Oh, please.
Um, in your opinion, you've obviously been doing this a while, when do you think we reach max capacity?
I, I can say that I did a report with Mr. Paradise here. Pulled some numbers together back in January. Some of that, some of the, I, I don't like to use the word guesstimate no numbers, but sometimes you just don't know, you know, you can have 100 acres, but only nine it gets built out on. But we have to use that 100, although that other 10 may not never develop. But we got to make sure we got that totally programmed in. So, uh, we was about 1.2 million gallons a day back in January. We're down to 713 now, so it's moving pretty quick. At that pace there, we'd probably be out next year next time compared to what we've seen. And we don't allow setting tanks. So yeah, that's one thing you remember, we don't allow setting tanks in the city.
And this is, um, I, I know the answer is we can't build anymore, right? But the process for that, and I, I don't know if Tommy, if you know the answer to that or if that's something that maybe we can explore when we get together for a continuing ed. I'm not, in terms of, so somebody has a piece of property, they file permits and they can't, we've run out of capacity, right? So then it's a no and that's it. Will it come before us, won't come before us?
If we can't serve it, um, we, we wouldn't, if, if we're going to tell the person upfront, we can't serve you, we're, there's no reason to spend your money on the engineering, we can't serve you. If they push it and it does come before you, I'll be sitting here saying, the city does not recommend this because we do not have the capacity. And, and I understand what y'all are saying and believe me, I appreciate y'all. And I think James appreciates and everybody in the city appreciates what y'all are doing. Just trying to make out, look out for this issue. And this is really, I think, um, our responsibility as staff to make sure that if it comes before y'all, that y'all, that we provide y'all with that information. Cause we, we're kind of in the weeds on it.
No, well, we, again, um, and I, and I think Commissioner Elliott said it, thank you so much for all that you all do. We hear tossed around, but didn't have even basic understanding of what it meant. So this has been, I think, tremendously helpful for all of us.
Thank you for having me.
Alright, thank you. So basically, everything we toured last week is already approved and happening, so it's already in these numbers.
Correct.
Just making sure.
As is validate, all of that is in.
Cause it's huge.
Yes. And so that may be next year or 10 years from now. But the city's going on the premise, we're going to look out for what we already have, what we've promised.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from Mr. Paradise with regards to?
Will this discussion happen before city council as well?
It's not scheduled. You got before city council this time.
All right. There being no other questions, we'll move on to the annexation request, uh, 25-02. All right.
She's recusing herself, if you'll say that.
Yeah, so Commissioner Waddell is recusing herself and that recusal slip is on file.
Mr. Paradise, is there anything that you'd like to share with us about this, uh, annexation?
Uh, yes, ma'am. This is for an annexation for a, um, sixty-seven point four-five plus or minus acres off of Hammond Pond Road. Parcel number zero zero two twelve oh one zero zero one, and a request in an R fourteen zoning. As you will see here, um, this is about, this is a, um, textbook case of a donut hole. Um, it is, um, surrounded by the areas of Renfield at Shanna Claire to the south, which is owned R ten, Rapids to the west, which is owned PD with residential, and Savannah Barony to the north, which is R fourteen. This is, you can see how it fits in there from, um, and of course you've got a recommendation from plant, from the planning department, the, um, recommending annexation. From a planning aspect, we could not think of a better use to go there than R fourteen, large lot. It fits in between, in there with the rapids and Barony and, um, and then Renfield at Shanna Claire. This is the overhead, it's woods with pond, and I would think that's called Hammond's Pond. This is a, um, conceptual layout, um, of what the developer has given us. There is nothing, this is annexa, annexation, um, action. There is nothing, I always have to say this for the record, for clarity. There is nothing that binds the developer or the city to this. You're not approving this. You're approving the, recommending the R fourteen zoning. This is what the developer has indicated he would like to do with it if it is annexed at R fourteen. And it's always, as I'll tell them, it's always nice for y'all to have an idea of what the plan is. And, um, there was, and y'all have had a lot of discussion about sewer. And I had discussions about sewer with Mr. Sutton and Mr. Clifford about this. And we do feel like the city's position is we can provide service to this. It is the, um, lowest density housing, largest lot. Um, we do not see these type subdivisions being annexed very often. It's something that the city needs, this type of subdivision. And, um, and we can serve that with the sewer, so that's not an issue. Any questions for me?
There being no questions for Mr. Paradise, we would ask that the applicant come up, please give your name and address. And, um, we'll have you share anything that you'd like for us to know. The commissioners may ask you some questions and then we will make time for the public to come up and ask you questions and then ask you to come up at one time and respond to all public.
Thank you for having me tonight. My name's Will Kakis, three one two nine Montpelier Drive, Augusta. Um, I think Tommy did a great job laying this out. It's ninety-four units, R fourteen. They're going to be seventy-five foot wide units. That's pretty, pretty big, or lots. It's pretty big lots in our world. With that larger lot, we're going to have a nicer house, um, pay for that lot. The sewer line already goes right through the middle of this property. Goes right up the creek on the south side. And then I guess to the west of Hammond Pond, right in, right through that northern corner. So we already have North Augusta sewer here. Our, our, uh, open space, that's twenty-two acres of open space. That's about thirty-three percent of the, of the development. So a large chunk of this develop, uh, devoted to open space. Lots, standard lot will be seventy-five by approximately two hundred, a good deep lot as well. Y'all have any questions?
To get to Tommy's questions, we know this isn't an approved plat. We're just, you know, looking at the annexation. Is the open space like wetland, like you can't really build on it? Cause I like that they're a large lot. I like the idea that we're doing something not small, but could it be built on?
So there is some wetland on the southern portion. A lot of it is, um, kind of virgin growth forest on a, you know, hilly topography. So instead of wetland that can never be touched, it's rolling hill, hilly topography, especially through that kind of southern part that comes up through the west.
Any other questions?
So the green space will just kind of be left as it is, right? No plans for trails or parks or anything?
That's, that's the assumption right now, yeah. We could do trails, but it's going to be open.
That's down the road.
Underserved.
What, I see it says fifteen thousand square feet. Is that, that's the lot size?
That's the lot size.
What is that in acres?
Uh, in, in acres, fifteen thousand square feet is
A third?
Just over a third of an acre. Don't make me do math up here. Yeah, I can't read either.
Any other questions for Mr. Kakis and we'll open it up for the public?
Um, just really to capacity, you know, timeline, is this something that would be twenty twenty-six or plans?
So for full build-out, we're probably going to be three years. On ninety-four units, it's twenty-five thousand eight fifty gallons per day. So it's about three percent of, what, R fourteen or whatever.
All right. If, Ms. Kakis, if you could, um, I'm not sure if we have any questions, but we'll see. Are there any, uh, questions from the public? All right. There being none, um, any further discussion from the commissioners or a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the annexation or recommend the council the annexation twenty-five zero zero-two for tax parcel number zero zero two one two zero one zero zero one. Requested to be zoned R fourteen, large lot, single-family residential.
So it's been moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded? Any further conversation? All right. There being none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Commissioner Waddell, say it. All right. Mr. Paradise, um, thank you and your team for all of the hard work that went into our, um, tour of North Augusta. Uh, with council, it was very informative and I think helpful. And so, um, again, as always, appreciate all that your entire team does for the betterment of, uh, of North Augusta. Is there anything that you'd like to share with us, a highlight from the staff report?
I actually do this month.
Oh, good.
Let's go.
Um, this, this has been, um, final plat month. You know, we do, you see all of these things come through and you approve the preliminary plat. And then, of course, they have to go out and do the work, put it, like y'all saw. And then they have to come back and do the final plat with us. And we've gotten five of those this month. So two albums already been approved, um, Martin Town Ridge, that's eighty-nine residential units. And Forest Bluff, section two with ninety-two, uh, single-family detached homes there. So that's a hundred and eighty-one residential lots that's hidden. And then in the process, we're still reviewing, um, Hammond's at Five Notch, which is sixty-four residential lots. And Renfield at Shanna Claire, um, phase A, which is fifty-six lots. That's about half of the whole thing. So, uh, that's another hundred and twenty residential lots. Plus we're reviewing the final plat for the high in the commercial section and the, um, that includes the apartments. So you've got the apartments that will be coming online as well. So in total, over this last month, two months, you've got about three hundred and one residential lots coming to the marketplace. In addition to the apartments going active, about three hundred apartments there at, um, uh, so yes, there's a lot going on.
Well, it would not be going on without you all and your hard work. So again, thank you. And, um, I think, and I appreciate you sharing that with us because that is also the type of activity that we don't see and is not discussed in this meeting. So folks may not realize just how very busy you all are. So again, thank you for that. All right. Is there anything else?
No, ma'am.
All right.